Good evening and welcome to the January 17th, 2019 School Board Meeting. We have completed our executive session and without objection, we now reconvene. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegion?
I thank you, and now it's time for Board Recognitions, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, if you will, join me down front, and Dr. Kevin Daniel will bring the recognitions.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, we have two great teams to recognize tonight. So let's begin. We're going to begin by recognizing Russell Elementary Amateur Radio Club, and they won the National Fall School Club Roundup Amateur Radio Championship. This is their second. I'm going to talk about them while they wait in the aisle. This is their second consecutive national championship competing in the elementary school division. The victory also gives this team, known as, and you can see it on the banner, the DX Road Runners, a fourth national title within the last five competitions. The club won the competition with a total score of 200,196 points, and that is 35,000 points higher than the second-place team, and that was high enough to win first in the middle school and second in the high school and the college and university level, so congratulations. Despite poor atmospheric conditions during the competition, they were able to make a total of 745 radio contacts in 45 states, four Canadian provinces, and two additional foreign countries. Tonight with them are the club director, Chris Laster, science teacher Kelly Bodnar, kindergarten-grade-level team lead Tracy Steiner, paraprofessional Kim Danenu, and the STEM Innovation Supervisor, Dr. Sally Creel. Please come forward to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. Congratulations. 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 Now, we're going to line you up for pictures right here. We'll line you up right in here. Yep, absolutely. Come across. Congratulations. Very good. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thanks for doing what you do. That's awesome. Congratulations. Great job. Now, we're going to line you up for pictures right here. We'll line you up right in here. Yep, absolutely. Come across. Congratulations. Very good. Congratulations. We're also pleased tonight to recognize the winners of the 2810 GHSA Class VII A State Champion Volleyball Team, and that is the Walton High School Volleyball Team. I'm going to talk about them briefly. The Lady Raiders, who were ranked number one in Georgia, are number five in the nation. They defended the state title against Milton High School. This is their fourth consecutive state title and the eighth title in nine years. Congratulations, ladies. Come forward along with Principal Catherine Melanda, Athletic Director Chris Williams, Coach Suzanne Fitzgerald, and Assistant Coach Tim Sanchez.
Congratulations. 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 Great job. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Great job. Awesome. Great job. Yeah. Congratulations.
We're also pleased tonight to recognize the winners of the 2810 GHSA Class VII A State Champion Volleyball Team, and that is the Walton High School Volleyball Team. I'm going to talk about them briefly. The Lady Raiders, who were ranked number one in Georgia, are number five in the nation. They defended the state title against Milton High School. This is their fourth consecutive state title and the eighth title in nine years. Congratulations, ladies. Come forward along with Principal Katherine Melanda, Athletic Director Chris Williams, Coach Suzanne Fitzgerald, and Assistant Coach Tim Sanchez.
Congratulations. 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 All the ladies and gentlemen, you've had some great tests and great results. Congratulations. Great job. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Great job. Awesome. Great job. Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's it. Chairman Chastain, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. All right. Now, let's move on to public comments. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three public speakers tonight. How much time can we allot?
Let's do four minutes apiece.
Okay. Our first speaker is Mary Jo Tricia, and she'll be followed by Joni Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Tricia, and I am a bus driver for Cobb County. We are required by transportation. Transportation requires the bus drivers to have hundreds of hours of training and certification along with specialized CDs in order to get the job, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus drivers to have CPR and first-aid training every two years. Transportation requires bus drivers to have an annual physical and meet physical requirements to do jobs that other employees are not supposed to do. Transportation requires bus drivers to have a minimum and maintain a near-perfect motor vehicle report, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus drivers to have and maintain a spotless background check. Transportation requires the bus drivers to accept the split schedule, expect them to always be available, which greatly limits the availability of other work. Transportation has the ability to call bus drivers during their run and expect them to be anywhere needed after their runs with no notice, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus drivers to commit to put this job first before all others, even if they could find another opportunity. Transportation requires bus drivers to call parents during the midday time or in the evening and have excellent communication skills. Transportation requires the bus drivers to create, organize, maintain, and constantly update seating charts, emergency forms, and other paperwork, a process that requires hours of extra work that is not allotted for, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus drivers to be able to spot and understand medical needs that are both visible and invisible, ADHD, autism, et cetera, and manage it while driving up to 70 other students, often with no prior awareness from the parent or the school. Transportation requires the bus drivers to attend monthly safety training and continuing education classes to constantly improve safety for the students. Transportation requires the bus driver to remain calm and tactfully handle all situations, even when they are getting screamed at, spit at, pushed, hit, bit, or cursed at by students and adults, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus drivers to be available for random drug screenings with no notice, immediately dropping all else. Transportation requires the bus driver to safely drive up to a 35-foot vehicle in horrible traffic in all unsafe weather conditions with a bus full of students while maintaining an utmost safety and patience, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires the bus driver to arrive up to an hour early, depending on the weather, to drive their areas, often in freezing buses, to assure our students can be safely and warmly picked up and not left stranded in flooded, frozen, or weather-damaged areas. Transportation requires the bus driver to endure temperatures into the hundreds along with attitudes it causes since the buses have no air conditioner. Transportation requires the bus drivers to teach our students the bus safety rules and expectation in order to keep them not just safe but alive, yet they say it's a part-time job. Transportation requires all this and more from their bus drivers, yet many have currently faced financial hardships and many have ultimately left for other jobs because of the lack of a structured pay due to the prior change in payroll software. And yet still, every day, school bus drivers face their day knowing that ultimately, the lives of their students are in their protection, even though it may be called a part-time job. It truly comes a full-time responsibility. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joni Taylor, who will discuss bus driver paycheck, and she'll be followed by Jimmy Richards.
Good evening. My name is Joni Taylor. I'm a Cobb County bus driver, and I'm going to yield my time to Jimmy.
Ms. Taylor, the rules do not permit yielding of time, so if you would like to use your four minutes, you're welcome to do that.
I've been a bus driver for seven years, and I've seen a lot of excellent bus drivers come and go. And when I speak to them and ask them, why would they leave? Because they love their job so much and love the children. They say to me, I can't live on the paycheck and the way we're paid. And it's a struggle. We get so many full paychecks a year, and I think it adds up to about maybe four, maybe five, but then the other times we get paid, we're getting paid for two days, four days, maybe six days, and when we have a break with the children being off, we don't get a paycheck. So therefore, when we come back, that's where the two days come in, that's where the four days come in, that's where the six days come in. And it's very hard to live on a budget like that, especially if you have children and you have other things like rent, mortgage, car payments. But we are there every day that we're scheduled to work. We're there no matter what the weather is because we love what we do. We love our children. They're like precious cargo to us. We may not have birthed any of them, but they are just like our children. So we're asking that you would consider what we're here talking about, that the bus drivers may stay with us, the good ones, because for every, I don't know all the statistics, but in my eyes, from the seven years, for every 10 or 15 that they hire, five to 10 of them leave because they need to have another source of income. So thank you for your time.
Our final speaker, Mr. Chair, is Jimmy Richards, who will discuss bus driver retention and payroll.
Well, thank you to the Board for allowing me to speak. My name's Jimmy Richards, school bus driver, second school year, so I'm still a rookie in some of the other drivers' eyes. I had retired from 44 years over the road driving, the last 30 years with yellow freight system here in Marietta, ended my career with 3.2 million consecutive miles accident-free driving, and some folks thought I went crazy and went to drive a school bus, but I enjoy it. It's really been able to take my training and apply it to the everyday life of a school bus driver, and there's been some ups and downs along the way, but one of the problems I see is the retention problem. We have a lot of vacancies every day. Drivers are leaving for other jobs. Personally, in the class I was in, we had 22, and I believe I'm one of four in that class left. That's unacceptable. Every day, you've got ads everywhere warning drivers, and you've increased the driver's pay, but the payroll problem, I've hear a lot of them that leave because of the inconsistency of the payroll. The lady before had mentioned about getting short paychecks. Certain days, you might get 10 one check, and you might get five or six the next, and some of the folks that I've had the privilege of working with the last two school years have left, and they have stated that's the problem was the payroll system. One of the things, too, is, and not only my fellow drivers and all, but everybody in the system, you know, it's a part-time job. I understand that, but it takes full time, your ability to take care of these kids, and that's what we're out there for. As the sign says, and yet we love our job. We all come in and do our job, take care of those kids every day, and we're just pleading with the Board to take a look at the payroll system, see what can be done so we can keep the good drivers we have. And some of the drivers would say, well, if you don't like it here, go get another job. Quit saying that, because they are. They're leaving. That's why we got vacancies. We need to retain the drivers we got, and it's not just the school system, it's the CDL shortage of qualified drivers all around the country. And hopefully, I can get some of my fellow drivers that's retiring in the spring to come over here and drive also in Cobb County, because it is a good thing for retirees and stay-at-home moms. If I look behind me, I don't see a lot of retirees, and I don't see a lot of stay-at-home moms. I see a lot of single moms that need a consistent paycheck. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Thank you to our speakers. Okay, and now we have Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. First, we have the consent agenda.
Okay, where did I put that? All right, where's that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My bad.
That's okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. My bad.
That's okay.
I'm going to ask John Adams to bring items needing action following executive session, and remember, there will be multiple options, multiple motions tonight, three in total. So just make that reminder for everybody to make the motions. John?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. We have three items, the first of which is the Human Resources Personnel Report. I am pleased to bring you the HR Personnel Report for today, January 17th. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the Personnel Action Report as discussed in executive session. We do have two principal-level and higher-position recommendations. Recommend Abner Breben, Employment as Director, Human Resources Systems, effective February 4, 2019, and recommend Mandy Whissing, Appointment to Deputy Chief Financial Officer in the Financial Services Division, effective January 18th. This concludes the Personnel Report.
Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the recommendations as read by the HR Director, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Scamhorn. Do I have a second? Mr. Wheeler, seconds. Any discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. If you approve the report as stated, please vote with your right hand, and that's 7-0. Thank you. Okay, I got, all right, so who has the next motion? All right, Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the reference to a student action, I move that the Board uphold the determination of the Student Disciplinary Tribunal as discussed in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Scamhorn. We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Wheeler, seconds. All in favor? And that is 7-0. Any opposed? None. All right. And now we have another motion coming from the floor. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you. I hereby move that the Board approve the following real estate contract. Purchase of real property and improvements on approximately 1.1 acres at 6394 Factory Shows Road in Mableton, Georgia for $140,000 plus ancillary costs, including inspection fees, closing costs, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Scamhorn, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? None. That's 7-0. Okay, and then what's next? Okay, now we have two items on the consent agenda. Without objection, the administrative rules and the ratification of the note that was on there. And now we come to Agenda Item Number Three.
Objection.
Oh, without objection, yeah. The consent objection, yeah. Okay. We're going to get this right, folks.
Exactly.
Now, Agenda Item Number Three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams to come and again bring Action Agenda Item Number Three for the construction of Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, as discussed in detail during earlier meeting, I'm pleased to bring you Agenda Item Number Three. Recommendation for approval to award a contract for a combined replacement elementary school for Harmony Leland Elementary School and Clay Elementary School. In accordance with the approved SPLOST 5 program, Harmony Leland and Clay Elementary Schools are scheduled to receive a combined replacement elementary school. Awarding a contract at this time will allow our project to remain on schedule with a substantial completion date of May 2020. We had seven proposals, and we are recommending that you approve the award to Nix Fowler Construction out of Mableton, Georgia, for $26.827 million, as budgeted in SPLOST 5, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Dr. Howard? Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, if we're ready.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we motion second, then we'll discuss.
I move for the approval to award the contract for the combined replacement elementary school, Harmony Leland and Clay Elementary, and also for the ratification of the note resolution confirming the acceptance of the best bid for $90 million in short-term construction.
All right.
It's just for Harmony.
Yeah, just the Harmony Leland. All right. So we'll do it.
All right, so Harmony Leland, I move to approve the award for a contract for the combined replacement elementary school for Harmony Leland Elementary and Clay Elementary.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Are you going to?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Morgan, seconds. All right, we have a motion second. Do we need any further discussion? Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know how many IU's are included in this rebuild?
Yes, sir. In the original two schools, there are a total combined 62 IU's. The rebuild has 76 IU's, so approximately 23% increase in size with an even greater increase in square footage.
So are we going to have 76 IU's in the school?
Yes, sir.
Which, well, okay. Is that school growing or stabilized?
It's roughly stabilized. The last count, Harmony Leland had 598 students, Clay had 377, so the additional capacity should more than accommodate what our forecast capacity for the school is.
Has anybody determined what the classroom size average will be?
I don't have that information handy, but we can get that for you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adams, can you give an approximate date that that building would be open, what you're looking at?
Sure. We're looking at a substantial completion date of May 2020. Our goal, obviously, is to always get things ready well in time and to do any relocation for the summer prior to opening. So a substantial completion date of May 2020.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
All right, Dr. Howard, just a question. Is there anything that the public should know as far as any concerns during the building project? Anything out of the ordinary, or is this considered a pretty straightforward project?
This actually is going to be better than many because we'll be doing this in a separate location. We won't have to tear down part of the school at the same time. So this should be a pretty good process. This, as we said during the day meeting, we give you good news stories. This is a great news story. This is a great news story of the Superintendent and this Board keeping their commitment to the good folks in South Cobb, and we think it's going to be a fantastic result.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Howard. Anyone else? All right, well, then, we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor as stated? All right, and that is 7-0. There's none opposed. Thank you, Mr. Adams. All right, so now this brings us to Board Member Comments, and I'll start with Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be efficient with the time, although it may take a little bit of time. I just wanted to bring us up to date as to November, December of our fallen heroes, our police officers that were killed or died in the line of duty. And the first one is Samuel Jimenez, Chicago Police Department, in to watch November 19, 2018. Patrolman Lee Ann Simpson, Philadelphia Police Department, Mississippi, in to watch Saturday, November 24, 2018. Police Officer David Romrell, South Salt Lake Police Department, Utah. Police Officer Hunter Edwards, Winchester Police Department, Virginia, in to watch Saturday, November 24, 2018. Deputy Sheriff Tony This, as we said during the day meeting, we give you good news stories. This is a great news story. This is a great news story of the superintendent and this board keeping their commitment to the good folks in South Cobb, and we think it's going to be a fantastic result.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Howard. Anyone else? All right, well then, we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor as stated? All right, and that is 7-0. There's none opposed. Thank you, Mr. Adams. All right, so now this brings us to board member comments, and I'll start with Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be efficient with the time, although it may take a little bit of time. I just wanted to bring us up to date as to November, December of our fallen heroes, our police officers that were killed or died in line of duty. And the first one is Samuel Jimenez, Chicago Police Department, in to watch November 19th, 2018. Patrolman Lee Ann Simpson, Philadelphia Police Department, Mississippi, in to watch Saturday, November 24th, 2018. Police Officer David Romrell, South Salt Lake Police Department, Utah. Police Officer Hunter Edwards, Winchester Police Department, Virginia, in to watch Saturday, November 24th, 2018. Deputy Sheriff Tony Hernan Nostra III, Sheriff's Department, California, in to watch Sunday, November 25th. Trooper Robert E. Nagel, New Jersey State Police, in to watch Monday, November 26th, 2018. Detective Marino, Miami Beach Police Department, in to watch Wednesday, November 28th, 2018. Deputy U.S. Marshal Chase S. White, United States Department of Justice, in to watch Thursday, November 29th, 2018. Sergeant Matthew Marino, Anmenes County Sheriff's Department, Colorado, in to watch Wednesday, December 12th, 2018. Miami-Dade Police Department, Officer Jermaine Brown, in to watch Wednesday, December 12th. Sergeant Benton Bertram, Charlestown Police Department, Indiana, in to watch Wednesday, December 12th. DeKalb County Police Department, One of Our Own, in to watch. Edgar Flores in to watch Thursday, December 13th. Police Officer Jason Quick in to watch Saturday, December 15th. Lumberton Police Department, North Carolina, Police Officer Mar Molido, Chicago Police Department, in to watch Monday, December 17th. Police Officer Conrad Charles Gary, Chicago Police Department, in to watch December 17th. Detective Irene Minjado, Louisville Metro Police Department, Kentucky, in to watch Monday, December 24th. Corporal Renee Singh, Noonan Police Department, California, in to watch Wednesday, December 26th. Officer Michael Wayne Smith, Henry County Police Department, Georgia, One of Our Own, in to watch February, December 28th. I just read 18 names that lost their lives protecting us during November, December, the holiday season. Their families will not see them ever again. So please send your thoughts and prayers. Pray for our officers, pray for our fire department, and those that protect us. Remember, while we're trying to run from, from danger, they're running toward danger. And I won't name them this time, but we'll wait till next month. We've already lost six in January 2019. It's totally unacceptable, and until we start speaking out more and more vigorously, I'm sure it'll continue. Onto something a little more pleasant, a lot more pleasant. Mr. Chair, our dinner was served tonight. We, we have a working dinner during our executive session, and it was prepared by North Cobb Culinary Arts Program students, headed up by Chef Chelsea Huey. And I'd like to thank them for doing outstanding job, and the meal was excellent. They'll do well in the coming future. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Mr. Morgan?
I appreciate that. I have a, I have a belief that a school district, through the eyes of many, is only as good as the people that our parents and children interact with. If they go to a school that they think is flourishing, then it's a very good chance they're going to say, we have a wonderful school and a wonderful school district. And I can attest, I'm always, I always pull for unsung heroes, people who you don't see, you don't read about, you don't read about them in the paper, you know, they're not, they're not readily evident to the general public. And I say that because I want to send kudos, sincere kudos to you, Ms. Sherri Hill. Had a family, reached out to me with a situation, and you made sure that that family was served. And you know, that'll never make the headlines, people will never know, but that family knows. And they have peace of mind tonight about the Cobb County School District, and that the Cobb County School District is responsive to real people and real families. And that would not have happened without you. So I want to publicly thank you for stepping up and being a hero for that family and for this school district. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Davis?
So, thank you, North Cobb High, for the delicious dinner. It was great. I'd also like to thank the bus drivers for coming out and speaking today. My 12-year-old gets on the bus every day, and the work that they're doing is very much appreciated. I also wanted to say that I was able to attend an event at East Cobb Middle on Tuesday, and it was hosted by Susan Norris from Rescuing Hope and Jeff Shaw from Out of Darkness Tonight, or Out of Darkness, excuse me. And that program dealt with trafficking, a very difficult topic to talk about, but one thing that they did, which was great, was they separated the kids and the adults to have separate conversations with them. And while it's a difficult subject, it's very real. One thing that they said was that traffickers look just like everybody in this room. There's no, it's rarely a boogeyman. It's the people that you see every day. They come from all different kinds of families, the people that are doing it, and also the kids that are affected. And they tied that in with safety in terms of social media. So many of our kids have smartphones, and of course, they have all kinds of other devices, and just making sure that we are, we are parenting. We're not their friends, we're parenting, and sometimes those are difficult conversations and things that we have to do to keep them safe. So I just wanted to thank those programs that held that at East Cobb, it was very well attended. They estimate 350 parents and students attended, and I think it's something we need to have throughout the system. I also wanted to let everyone know that we have some events coming up, just some parent discussions. One is on Tuesday at Dickerson at 7:00 PM. I'll be there, Dr. Howard will be there. And Saturday, actually, I'll be just having a little meet and greet at the Whole Foods up in East Cobb, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Howard?
All right, I just want to just say thank you to the whole Cobb County and, and everybody for working together. We really are trying to stay together and keep the same goal. Folks in the Smyrna, Mableton, that kind of Osborne area, there's some great families working hard every single day. And we have such a dynamic, and I say dynamic in the sense of a wide variety, ever-changing neighborhoods and, and schools, and we have some of the most amazing principals, staff members, teachers, and students there. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone who's listening knows how hard they're working. I know everyone wants to shout out their school, but I'm going to, a special shout out in Smyrna and Mableton area. Also tomorrow, no, excuse me, Saturday, has anyone heard of Dancing with the Stars? Okay, no, you haven't heard of it, no. So Saturday, is Smyrna Dancing with the Stars? I will not be dancing, nor will I be a star, but I will be in attendance. But it's to benefit the Campbell High School Athletic Program, and it's going to be an amazing event, and that's coming up on Saturday. Also, just be on the lookout, there's a couple of round tables that I'll have the pleasure of hosting or co-hosting. There'll be a kind of a SPOLOST update town hall likely in, likely in early March, and also a special needs town hall, just to kind of have families who have children with special needs and special situations to come together and learn from other parents, and also some folks from the, the district. So we have some good things happening. We're really excited about the lines of communication continuing to open up, and at the end of the day, working together, building those relationships, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say welcome back to all the teachers and administrators and central office administrators for the next semester. We've had a fantastic first semester this year, and I expect the second semester will be even better. A lot of activities going on in our schools. Also, I want to say thank you for those who have commented about my wife's surgery this morning. She had outpatient, some tumors removed from her bladder, so she's in a little bit of pain, but she's okay. She still let me come in the house, so everything's good, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, and please give the princess our best.
I'm sure the princess will appreciate that.
All right, Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had the pleasure to attend the school council meeting at Harrison High School this week, and a group of parents concerned, working to help Harrison improve. Great group. After that, I had an opportunity to tour the SPOLOST projects at the Harrison High School with the gym and auditorium and the, what I call the Stafford Center, black box and video area. It, it really impressed me because a lot of times when you go to the, the different schools throughout the county, they're, when they're adding on, they're just kind of add-ons. But this really kind of blends real well. They've done a real good job of making it, you know, it's like it's been there all the time, and I mean, they got a lot of work to do to finish up, but it, it's working well. Second, had the opportunity to go to the Hillgrove-McKeachran basketball games this week, and rivalry game. I don't think I've ever seen a gym filled standing room only like that in a long time. It was a great game, great crowd, supporting both teams, and it was a pleasure to watch some good basketball. In, in closing, I would like to second Mr. Morgan and Ms. Davis in our unsung heroes, the bus drivers that came tonight. That, that's a tough job. I actually drove bus for a little while, and my hat's off to every one of the bus drivers that work in this county for the things that they do every day. That, that, that is a real tough job, and I appreciate them for all they do, and I'm glad they came and spoke tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Ragsdale?
Sir, Mr. Chair, appreciate the opportunity. First of all, I need to apologize for fumbling the kickoff today. First meeting coming out of the gate, I guess it's been too long, a little rusty, so, but, but anyway, my bad on, on the, the mess up there. So unfortunately, but something that, that everybody is, is probably aware, starting off with condolences again tonight, we lost three individuals. Two of them, a mother and child, a sixth grade student from Durham Middle School, we lost over the holiday break as a result of, of a house fire. And, and I'm sure all of you saw that that was widely publicized on the media, but certainly our thoughts and prayers go out with the husband and father and, and the rest of the family during this time. And also, we lost a special education teacher from Loving Good Middle that passed away during the holiday break, so certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to both of those families. Again, as, as many of you already have, welcome everybody back after a restful holiday break. And before you know it, we'll be graduating over 7,000 seniors. So it's, it's, it's approaching that time of year again, and, and again, you know, as, as we start off, and I've said, I will pause when I'm starting to say something because I realize we have two new board members that may or may not be familiar with, with the process that, you know, we have become so familiar with, but definitely welcome both Ms. Davis and Dr. Howard, and look forward to, to the next four years. Welcome you to our team, and just, again, just excited about, about the work that we can do. Already to, tonight, I know it's, it's in the South Cobb area, Mr. Morgan's post, but, but definitely, you know, Harmony Leland is, you know, we made that commitment many years ago that it would be the first project coming out of the gate for SPOLOST 5, and it is. And, and that means a lot, I know, to the community, but it, it means a lot to me because the, the district made that commitment and, and we're, we're meeting that commitment. Congratulations, Mr. Banks, to one of your schools, Tournament of Roses Parade, Lester High School, was able to march in there, that was awesome, if you watched it. Certainly not the best momentous part of it, but as we got to watch what people get to do on the fly when the float broke down, and, and announcers just didn't really know what to say or do or anything like that. So that, that was, that was quite entertaining, but congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to four senators from Cobb that have been selected to chair committees, specifically, both Republicans and Democrats. Specifically, congratulations to Senator Lindsey Tippens, remaining in education, has moved up to higher education, certainly very pleased with him still, still being in the education arena. Also, want to remind everyone, Monday, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is, is a day that, that we need to remember and, and recognize the, the great things that he did. You know, as, as events take place, it's, it's just important that we, and you've heard me say this before, we just need to treat people right. You know, that's, that's always been my philosophy, and, and that's what we need to do, and I believe that's what we need to do. We need to do it more than ever today to, to repair the divisiveness that unfortunately we're experiencing in our country. And that, that also overflows into the community and down to, to our district. So, that being said, I also want to recognize the bus drivers that, that came and spoke tonight. We have discussed this issue, and normally I do not recognize or, or talk about any, any kind of public comments, but all of these were, were employees. And we talk about the one team, and certainly I appreciate you, you coming and speaking. We, we appreciate what you spoke about. And specifically, I want to recognize Joni, because she was not prepared to speak, and she was wanting to give her time to somebody else. And I don't think she's still here, but the reason I want to recognize her is because when she came back to speak and took that opportunity, it's, it's speaking straight from the heart that's important. And that's what we heard. So I commit to, to the bus drivers that, that we do greatly appreciate you as team members, and we will look at this issue again. I'm, I'm not making any promises that we can do anything any different, but I'll commit to you that, and promise that we will look into this, and hopefully we can come up with something that, that's a little, a little bit better, because we certainly understand the situation that, that has been brought forth. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Well, I'm going to be at Rocky Mount attending the Drama Club presentation, I think. Mr. Banks will be Saturday night, I'm going Friday night, which I think is at the 25th and the 26th? That sounds right. Anyway, but that is my signal to remind everyone that for the cost of a very expensive ticket, this is, we're starting the second semester. This is when we start seeing the spring presentations. It's the concerts with the band, it's the orchestras, the drama clubs, it's the choruses. And if you want to see what performing arts looks like in Cobb County, just look in your local schools, I'm sure there's stuff on the webpages, but the, one of the most thrilling things I do is go out and see our kids performing at, at, at very high levels, and I would encourage everybody that works in the, in the, in the district, and for folks who don't even have students in the schools, to go visit your local school and witness the performing arts. And if there's no objection, we are adjourned.